We call this a regularly scheduled meeting of Georgetown County Council to order. First, first item on the agenda is the invocation. If Mr. Charlton would do the honors for us, please sir.
Let us stand those who can. Lord, we come before you this night. First of all, Lord, we just want to thank you. We want to thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that we each have. We then want to thank you, Lord, for the beauty and the bounty of this great land that we live upon, and especially right here in Georgetown County. And as this council prepares itself for the business tonight at hand, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your compassion, Lord, that we would be good stewards over all the things that are entrusted in our care. For these and all things, I ask in Jesus' holy name. And all the people said, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, and every and just one.
Next is the approval of agenda with the recommendation to move Proclamation 20-13 to the, to the beginning of the agenda. Agenda. Is there, is there a motion on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve that, along with the aforementioned.
Motion by Mr. Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, we have a public comment. Teresa, I understand we have a few people that have signed up.
Mr. Chairman, we do have seven speakers signed up tonight. Two individuals have sent written comments in, so we'll start with those who are present, and they will have up to four minutes each. The first will be Mr. Wesley Gibson.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Wesley Gibson, speaking on behalf of the NAACP 5520 and the Georgetown Citizens for Progress. The death of George Floyd has sparked outrage among people of all races to pour out into the streets of America and the world, speaking against systemic racism. First, I would like to commend Sheriff Carter Weaver and Chief Kevin Waits, who took to the streets and marched with the protesters. They put their words into action. Derek Johnson, National President of the NAACP, defines systemic racism, structural racism, or institutional racism as systems and structures that have procedures or processes that disadvantages African Americans. Georgetown County intentionally or unintentionally practices systemic racism in its hiring practices, services rendered, and parking recreation. Let's look at the employees of Georgetown County. Out of 42 departments listed, excluding clerk of courts office and magistrates, there is one black director and no assistant black directors. Plenty of low-level workers, but only one in management. What is this called? We call it systemic racism. Let's look at hiring practices. A couple of years ago, Georgetown County was taxed with looking for a new human resource director. An African-American woman with a master's degree in human resources applied, but Georgetown County didn't even afford her an interview. The person that was hired was a white male with some college, but no degree. When does some college take precedence over a master's degree from accredited university? What is this called? We call it systemic racism. Let's look at public services. West Virginia Road was just recently resurfaced. They began in Highmark Street and went down to Wacca-Mon Street, which is the beginning of the Black Neighborhood. If they had paved one more block, the entire world would have been paved. It was brought to my attention by my councilperson that the reason that they did not pave it because that's all they were contracted to do. But we call it systemic racism. Let's look at Parks and Rec. About 12 years ago, Parks and Rec got a new director that does not possess a degree in Parks and Recreation. Then, we got an assistant director hired with no degree when we have two employees with over 50 years combined service, one holding a degree in Recreation that were overlooked. What do we call it? Systemic racism. In closing, the time for change is now. The world is changing. Georgetown County needs to make a change. Change must come in the areas of management, employment opportunities, services, and recreation. No longer, people should be hired by affiliation or who they know, but by accreditation and the credentials they possess. If that's my time, I have more, but that's okay. But please, let's try to make it more fair and more just in the years to come. Thank you.
Before we call our next speaker, I will point out that our timer sounds a little bit different tonight than it usually does, so the next is Mr. Michael Walker.
Good evening, Chairman, members of council. My name is Michael Walker with Taishan Walker Architects, and I'm representing myself and Coastal Structures. We were a design-build firm that submitted about a year ago to the Town of Andrews Police and Fire Safety Project, and at the time, we narrowed down to two firms, and we were to submit an envelope with a price and a design. The envelope was to be sealed and not opened. Only the one open for the one that was selected was to be opened. Then on the night of August 23rd, on a Friday evening, we got a letter stating that we got a notice of intent of award to a firm from Columbia, and subsequent on Monday, we emailed and asked if we could get our envelope back, come pick it up, or see the scorecard on how one was selected, as well as we sent a certified mail. And we got no response from that point, and really heard nothing about the project until recently. And when we heard recently, we were hearing these numbers from three and a half million, four million, five million, eight million, whatever, to a million, and we were hearing that it was going to cost $750,000 to demo a building, that there was no way it was going to cost that. So just to make it clear, the envelope that we never got back stated that we could do the 11,000 square foot building for $2,850,000. We have plenty of experience. I've done over a dozen fire stations, many in this county, and they all have been on budget and on time. We are very suspect of this situation as to why it was the most untransparent process we've ever been through in a solicitation, and we've gotten absolutely no response from the Town of Andrews. And we feel very uncomfortable with the fact that the county is about to give away $3 million in sales tax and have no strings attached, no oversight. I understand it's another jurisdiction, but it just doesn't, it doesn't seem right. And I think you guys need to be aware of that and understand the circumstances, and we'd be glad to sit down and explain any of the situations further to anybody, but this is not our typical scenario. We don't typically like to go out in public and mention these things, but this one just doesn't seem right. And we're just letting you know that situation, and I think Marshall was about to say the same thing, so if there's any other comments he wants to make that I forgot, we'll let it be known. But again, we did request certified mail and by email, got no response, and now we're hearing about these numbers of a project that is way more expensive and bigger than was ever advertised. So from our standpoint, it just doesn't seem right, and we're a local firm, both of us. We employ plenty of employees in the county and have done plenty of work for the county, and honored that we have that opportunity. So thank you very much.
Marshall Easterling.
Good evening. I'm Marshall Easterling with Coastal Structures, and I concur with everything Mr. Walker just said. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent Davis.
Good evening, council. My name is Vincent Davis. I'm the president of the Polley's Island Civic Club, and I'm here to talk about the importance of our sidewalks. As we all know, Polley's Island is growing. We have a lot of new developments that came along, population increase, which means the traffic's increased. We're looking for sidewalks on Martha Luther King, Pettigrew, and Parkersville. And we know the importance of this. Sidewalks is very important for the safety of our kids, older people who walk as exercise, and just the regular community. I mean, you know, times are changing. We need to try to change and bring it up to speed, so we come and bring greetings from our civic club. We've been digitally working with Councilman Goggins. We've been working together to make these things happen, and we'd like to see it move in progress and get it, get it done. We've had a couple of vehicles and pedestrian collisions, which brought this very important subject to the front, that we need these sidewalks done. They're very important for the safety of our community. And we will thank you in advance if we can get those things approved. That's my time, and I'd like to say thank you.
Pilar Richards. Pilar Richards.
Greetings to all in your respective places. I am Pilar Richard, a concerned citizen from rural District 7 with demands of answers. I've reached out to District 7 Councilwoman Moran on behalf of the Oatland Community Outreach as I sit as the Community Involvement Chair back in May with updates on deferred plans, projects that pertain to Brown's Ferry community, which Oatland is a part of, from the, for the past five years to current public date. I cannot keep my neighbors abreast of future plans for the Brown's Ferry, better known as BOLD, B-O-L-D, which is Brown's Ferry, Oatland, Lanes Creek, and Dunbar, without any response back from him. One email we got back, he said that things are moving slow due to COVID, but yet we are here holding a county council meeting, and we all seem that we can still meet and have that kind of discussion with any demands or any questions that come about within our county. Also, I see everybody in the audience with masks, but yet you all aren't. I'm a mother of two small children. They are three and four years old, so going into businesses here in the county, some businesses owners, employees don't have masks on. I'm picking up my kids. Come on, don't bite on your mask. Keep your mask on your face. I feel like we need some kind of ordinance or something for businesses. If you are a business and you're open within the county, we need to keep our numbers with this COVID down as much as possible, and it's up to us to take as much precaution as possible. Like I said, I'm a mother, and I really do not want to have this disease or with my children to have this disease, and also my neighbors. So if any step moving forward, we need to address this matter more sooner than later, and that's it. Thank you.
Daphne Smith.
Greetings to everyone in their respective places. My concern is the drainage in the Spring Gully area. And so I'm going to focus on where I live, and that's Lincolnshire Drive. The drainage, well, you know, at the end of some corners, you have the drain hole. And so when I proceed to look in the drain hole, and I have pictures, the drain hole is clogged with debris and water. So of course, it's impossible for that water to travel to where it needs to go. So in my yard is literally an island after it rains. It takes about a week for the water to drain or to dry out. It's causing, and when I say infestation, I mean infestation. We've called the mosquito truck. They come, they spray. Mosquitoes are so bad. The frogs are awful. I'm telling you, they're all over the place. They're in your house, water bugs, ants, and I know part of that I can spray, but I'm defeating the purpose. If the water could drain off of the property and where it needs to go, we wouldn't have the problem. After the water has drained out of my yard for after a week, it takes another week for us to at least pour chlorox or do something to the, to the land, because the land has a stench that you cannot go out and really enjoy your property because it smells awful. I'm just begging that you all please help us out with this problem. Also, the water settles in our road. The road is tore up. Our children can't ride bicycles, and you know, it's just, it's awful. We don't have bike trails. I mean, unfortunately, where we live, that's not an invested, you know, item in our area. So we don't have bike trails, and while we own area in bike trails, we don't even have a park. And I live in the Green Town. Again, that's the Spring Gully, so that would be the Green Town, White Creek, Grave Station area. We're having to use the elementary school. We use their park, but of course, you know, with the COVID, we can't. So we result in riding bike, and it goes back again. We really can't enjoy riding bike because the roads are tore up. So please help us help our children. Thank you.
Mr. Marvin Neal.
Ken, good evening. I'm Marvin Neal, the president of Georgetown Branch, NAACP 5520. I'm here tonight to touch on a couple of subjects that several individuals have touched on. I want to start with the COVID-19 and the conditions as we go into the different facilities within the county here. I know I've sent out several letters to the county council and also to the different businesses, which things have changed in some manner, but we can't control what they're doing full line in Walmart. I spoke with their CEOs and those at the upper levels. But in the county government buildings, you know, as we walk in back and forth, you know, there should be some standard, and I'm pretty sure there are some standards, measures from looking online, but as you go into the building, you see something different at times. So I'd like for the, the county actually to just put more emphasis on the masking and the situation with COVID-19, because it's a definite increase in the, the death and conditions here in South Carolina and others, other states. You know, the medical providers have already put out what we need to do, and I'm just asking that we put more emphasis on those things. The second thing I want to talk about, there's a lot of situation with, with the country right now. It's stressed with hate symbols and stuff of that nature. I was getting several calls over the week just in reference to just symbols of trees, hangman trees and stuff of that nature throughout the county here, and different, just placards and stuff that, that we might need to address by some means through your county justice committee, maybe coming up with a resolution or something of that nature that we could bring some change to whatever people is asking here. Some of them asking these symbols to be removed. I don't know if that works. Some are asking these trees to be cut down. I don't know if that works. So we just asking for the assistant from our county council and the justice committee and see what we could come up with to bring some calm to that situation. I know Eric Carolina was called on the situation with Hangman Tree in Sanford and Lambertown there, and there are other trees also that I was called on, because they mentioned Eric's name in the conversation. So just asking for a resolution or something that we could bring to front here. Also, in the situation with, with bike path and the roadways. I know the capital project sales tax have been, is no longer going to happen this year, but we still looking forward to it. But what is happening, I understand there's funding from the state level, not from, yeah, from the state level in reference to the gas tax, that funding is available for roadways. And I don't know at what depth it has made it down to us yet, but as that come about in the rural areas, Flannelsville, and I know Brown's Ferry and those areas in the 7th and 5th district there, and understanding Polley's Island and those areas also in the rural areas, there's a need for some other means of safety when it comes down to the roadway and biking and people just walking from place to place to get to the parks and stuff. There's a safety condition there that we really need to look at hard, because as they come through with these paving, I'm asking, especially in our area, the 7th district, that we think about extending those roadways where at least you could ride a bike or put a path in as, the other areas that you've seen going to Charleston and places like that. I know the challenges of us with heirs' property and cutting through properties and deeds and stuff of that nature won't be possible in our area, but one thing is possible, that we could extend our roadways where it'd be a safer condition for our communities and the place where we live. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and God bless you.
Mr. Chairman, that's the final speaker tonight, aside from the written comments.
Okay, and we, we have two speakers.
Okay, and we have two speakers who sent in their information via email, and I will read those. The first one is from Randy Gamble. Please submit to be addressed to county council meeting. My first concern is about the horrible roads in our rural areas, in particular Lanes Creek. Lanes Creek Drive was previously patched, the work is horrible. Why do residents continue to pay taxes if roads can't be done right like other communities in this county? Dunbar Road is another bad area where the road needs serious attention. Ditches are not being cleared, causing flooding and when there's heavy rain. More patrolling communities late at night in rural areas would be nice to cut back on racing. Why is it taking so long for Tony Drive in the Oatland community to be paved? Thank you in advance for addressing these concerns. And finally, from Mr. Gary Weinrich. Within the past few days, the number of COVID-19 cases along the Grand Scrans has skyrocketed. The superintendent of schools warned that schools may not be open if the trend is not reversed, and Titleins Hospitals issued an urgent warning that available hospital bed cases are decreasing dramatically. This all begs the question, why is there no agenda item on this evening addressing specific measures to mitigate COVID-19 spread in Georgetown County? Other city and county councils are holding emergency sessions on COVID-19. Our present approach is failing, and burying our heads in the sand won't reduce the spread. The medical experts all agree that cloth, face coverings, and social distancing are the only effective ways to reduce the spread in public areas. Other communities are requiring masks. If county council wants to keep our businesses and schools open and to be able to offer health care to the seriously ill, it's time to mandate masks in public. Your leadership has never been more important. The item is the, we're going to move the proclamation 20-13 up, because I believe we have a representative from the Census Bureau that's here virtually. So, Ms. Public Information Officer, would you like to set this up?
Mr. Akers is taking care of that backstage.
Okay. This is a proclamation to proclaim Georgetown County's council's support of the U.S. Census Bureau and pledge assistance in achieving accurate count in Georgetown County in the 2020 census. And the proclamation reads, "Support of the 2020 census effort and partnership with the Census Bureau. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a count of the population and provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. And whereas Georgetown County Council recognizes the accurate census data is essential for determining the development and growth needs of Georgetown County and its residents. And whereas Georgetown County Council is committed to encouraging every resident to accurately complete the census questionnaire. And whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based in part on census data and housing. And whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is necessary for an accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas information from the 2020 census and American Community Survey are vital tools for economic development and increased employment. And whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. And whereas a united voice from business, government, community-based, and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 census message to reach more than our citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that Georgetown County Council is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau and the state of South Carolina and will support the goals and ideals for the 2020 census and will disseminate 2020 census information. Encourage all county residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 census and increase participation. Provide census advocates to speak to county and community organizations. Support census takers as they help our county complete and accurate count. Strive to achieve a complete and accurate count of all persons within our borders. Adopted this 23rd day of June in the year 2020." Is there a presentation to be made by the census representative?
Yes, sir. Ms. Vermael Simmons would like to say a few words.
Greetings.
Greetings. Good evening, councilmen and chairman and council members of Lawwood Community. Ivermael Simmons, Partnership Specialist with U.S. Census Bureau. Thank you for that proclamation. The reason I'm here is to help us help each other. Yes, it's in the Constitution. Yes, it's done every 10 years. Yes, 2020 census, every census is completely confidential. It's sealed for 72 years. All those are critical facts. Each census worker takes an oath from the time they take until they die. They could not give any information they glean from doing the census. With all that being said, we need your help. Help in making sure that Georgetown is fully counted. And why am I saying that? Just giving you some data. In 2000, you only counted 52% of your population. In 2010, you did a much better job, and you're up there, close to the state average. In 2010, you counted 73% of the population. In 2010, because of your improvement and the improvement of all the other cities and counties within the state, we got nationally recognized. We got a seventh seat in the House of Representatives. Yes, census information, census data is used for the importance of making sure of representation. That's the prime reason. The other reason is it brings resources back into our community. There's over $675 billion at stake. Again, over $675 billion at stake, but you only get your fair share by being counted. And how are those census resources, the dollars, coming into your area by being counted? Your schools, your roads, your hospitals, people on grant jobs. If you were in Georgetown County in 2000, you can actually look back and see the difference from 2000 to 2010 with just people with grant jobs, with your roads, even though we may still need more money for roads. But again, we get that as federal dollars based on being counted. Let me give you some more data. Why am I doing this today? Because presently, the national average as of the 22nd rate is 6%. Now, Georgetown County is only at 44.8%. Of 36 counties, Georgetown is ranking number 41. I know we can do better. And the reason I know is I worked with you in 2010. And like I said, in 2010, Georgetown County is 73% of the population. How can we get this done? You can do it online, my2020census.gov, or you can dial a toll-free number, 1-844-330-2020. And if you use the telephone method, you can get within 13 different languages. So if English is not your first language, you can have a language of choice. And of course, we still have the paper copy. Three different ways, three different means of doing it. And if by chance you don't do it in any of those ways, someone will knock on your door. You will have an number to come knocking on your door to remind you. But I know the conditions that we're living in, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here now doing a live feed, because I know that we're faced with many, many conditions. COVID-19 being at the top of the list. We are asking and we're encouraging everyone to please make sure to fill out your census form. Online is very convenient, because you can do it on your smartphone or on any internet connectivity device. It's safe and it's easy, sealed for 72 years. It will be 2092 before this document is opened, and we need you to count everyone, everyone who's been living in your house as of April 1st, 2020. Please remember, this is all about each of us. We need to be counted. If we rest where we are now, you will see many things in Georgetown County just dissipate. But we don't want that to happen. We want to make sure that we count everyone and we continue to be progressive. We also know that big box buildings use census data when they decide to come into an area. People come into areas where the community is thriving. So please complete your 2020 census. And again, it's safe, it's easy, and it's important. Only nine questions for the head of house though, and seven questions for everyone else in the house also. Do it now. We really need you to complete that, because without you, we're going to just lose. And I want to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just like to add that we do have a webpage set up on Georgetown County's website. It's gtcounty.org/census, where residents can go and they can find more information on the census, on how to complete it, on why it is so important for our community. They can download flyers, they can download other information to help get people to complete the census, because as Ms. Vermael said, you know, this translates into dollars that we receive from FEMA for all sorts of different programs, and we really need to get our numbers up. So we are happy to work with any community groups or any residents who would like to participate in increasing census participation. Mr. Neal just reminded me, we do have some training that's going to be happening right here at Howard for people who are going to be census workers. So there is a lot going on with that, and if anybody would like to get involved, I would encourage them to reach out and contact us.
Great. Thank you, and you and Mr. Johnson are be commended for your efforts at getting the word out as well. So the recommendation is for the adoption of proclamation number 20-13. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of proclamation 2013.
Motion by Mr. Carolina, is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Newton. All in favor? Any opposed? The proclamation is adopted. Thank you, Ms. Simmons, for being with us today.
And thank you.
Next item is the approval of minutes from the budget work session of May 26, 2020, and also approval of minutes from the regular council session of May 26, 2020. Can I have a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the adoption of the 526 budget meeting minutes.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goggins, all in favor? The minutes are approved. Next is the consent agenda, and by virtue of approving the agenda for this?
I think he just did the first one.
You did it both of them?
He did.
The workshop.
I think he did.
Teresa, did you get in the minutes that they were both approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent agenda, and by virtue of approving the agenda for today, the following agenda items are approved. That's bid number 20-32 and bid number 20-20. We next move on to public hearings. Open the floor for public hearings for ordinance number 20-18, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. Hearing none. Close public hearings on ordinance 20-18. Open the floor for public hearings, an ordinance number 20-22, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating budget of Georgetown County. Hearing none will close the public hearing for ordinance number 20-22. We'll open the floor for public hearings for ordinance number 20-25, an ordinance to repeal and replace the Georgetown County solid waste user fee ordinance in its entirety. Hearing none, close the floor for public hearing on ordinance number 20-25. Open the floor for public hearings for ordinance number 20-26, an ordinance to earmark and set aside excess 2014 capital project proceeds. Hearing none, we'll close the floor for public comments on ordinance number 20-26. Next, we move to appointments to boards and commissions. First is the Economic Development Alliance Board. Mr. Tucker, would you be able to set that one up for us?
I am happy to. As many of you are aware, the Alliance for Economic Development for Georgetown County is affiliated with our economic development efforts and support our efforts. It is, the board structure for that organization is a little different than most other county boards and commissions. Our board structure is roughly 20 people. County council collectively has the ability to appoint seven representatives to that board, two of which must be seated county council folks. The chairman has a standing seat on the board. We are currently short one sitting county council person to represent you all on that organization, and I think that is what we have come to address this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council, to Mr. Tucker? In that case, the recommendation is to ratify the appointment of council member Raymond Newton to serve on the Economic Alliance Board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do nominate Mr. Raymond Newton to serve on the Economic Development Alliance Board as a representative of County Council District Five, really the council as a whole.
Motion by Mr. Goggins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Raymond, Mr. Raymond Newton. Next is the Foster Care Review Board. Let's see. The Foster Care Review Board consists of members appointed by both Ori and Georgetown County. Georgetown County Council nominates five members on an at-large basis. Board members are nominated by county council and appointed by the governor to serve a four-year term. Two members of the Foster Care Board are serving on terms that have expired. Ms. Terry Triana and Ms. Linda Liebert are currently, and she is currently serving as board chairperson. The board meets monthly, rotating between the two counties to review the cases of children residing in foster care homes for more than four consecutive months. Special training is required by the state for all members. The recommendation is to nominate Ms. Terry Triana and Ms. Linda Lieberman to continue service on the Foster Care Review Board. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate, we nominate Terry Triana and Ms. Linda Liebert to the Foster Care Review Board.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moran. All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations on the two folks for being re-nominated to the Foster Care Review Board. We now move to proclamation number 20-14 in celebration of the Golagichi National Appreciation Week. Bear with. Golagichi people are descendants of enslaved Africans from various ethnic groups in West and Central Africa, brought to the U.S. and forced to work on the plantations of coastal South Carolina, Georgia, North Carolina, and Florida. Proclamation 20-14. Proclamation 20-14 recognizes and celebrates the importance of Golegucci culture as well as the history and legacy of the Golegucci culture of Georgetown County. And the proclamation reads, whereas, this is celebrating Golegucci National Appreciation Week. Whereas in the 18th century, Georgetown County, the third oldest county in South Carolina, became the locale of some of the richest plantations in the South. And whereas prosperity for plantation owners was a result of multiple West African ethnic groups brought to the United States and enslaved for the purpose of cultivating cash crops on the southern plantations of coastal South Carolina, Georgia, and North Carolina and Florida. And whereas this was the beginning of an intermingling of a variety of many backgrounds as well as different dialects, the people began developing their unique culture, language, traditions, cuisine, music, and more derived from their African roots. Whereas the Golegucci are descendants of those enslaved Africans and one of the oldest cultural groups still thriving as our southern culture, though developed through the adversity of slavery. This resilient group of people who worked through and overcame hardship is worthy of celebrating. And whereas increased recognition of the cultural legacy of the Golegucci can be attributed to individuals such as Queen Quette, founder of the premier advocacy organization whose mission is for the continuation of the Golegucci culture. She has committed 20 years towards advocacy, including her work with Congressman James Clyburn towards the United States Congress establishing the Golegucci Cultural Heritage Card. And whereas celebrating and sharing the rich heritage and preserving the Golegucci culture is an important part of ensuring its survival for future generations, now therefore be it proclaimed, the Georgetown Council does hereby join in the celebration of 2020 Golegucci Nation Appreciation Week, which will be launched on July 26, 2020, and encourages the citizens of Georgetown County to participate in activities to increase knowledge, appreciation, and preservation of this rich culture. So shall it be this 23rd day of June, 2020. So it is recommended that Georgetown County Council adopt this proclamation. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of proclamation number 20-14.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina, all in favor? The proclamation is adopted. I understand we have some comments from Queen Quette.
How many children are dead in Georgetown? You think like that, how it going down? Lady Queen come back, we're gonna take this year. I understand, run it, the deer everywhere, and think like that, and we ain't want nobody to get sick and think like that, so it can't be there with 100 children, this your time. But I so glad, I had more than 20 years when I been a kind of down the road from San Tel where I did it now, to 100 children right on in Georgetown. So I so glad that for this year, Golegucci 2020, see if we culture move clearly, that 100 children under Giti's proclamation to we, and that 100 show, say right there in Georgetown County, South Cackalacky, you're still all about the Golegucci nation appreciation. So I want to say thank you, thank you to all the 100 children who did it in Georgetown and think like that, and pray to 100 family and the whole council, everybody who did it, all 100 staff and everything, pray so you're healthy, you're safe, and you're still blessed up and think like that. After all of this year, I still coming back up to Kirk John, and we want shout together, yeah? Thank you, thank you for all these 20 years for 100 to celebrate with we, who we be, and we be Golegucci, 19 people. Peace and blessings.
Our thanks to Queen Quette for being with us here today virtually. Next, we move to resolution number 20-15, to reinforce diversity, support racial equality, and affirm that Black Lives Matter. The resolution reads as follow. Georgetown County Council Resolution Number 20-15, a resolution to reinforce diversity, support racial equality, and affirm that Black Lives Matter. Whereas Georgetown County, a local government and body politic, is not shielded from the most recent national events resulting from the deaths of Black Americans and cannot remain silent. And whereas throughout our nation's history, institutional racism have caused injustices that deepen racial disparities across all sectors of society and have lasting negative consequences for our county, state, and nation. And whereas our nation's Declaration of Independence ratified on July 4, 1776 declared that, quote, "That all men are created equal and they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights; that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas while Georgetown County Council cannot alter the historical and factual context of racism and bigotry in the United States, this council can and does unequivocally declare it will not condone racial inequalities within the United States. And whereas Black Lives Matter protests have swept the nation as demonstrators demand justice in response to the killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Almond Aubrey, and far too many other Black Americans. And whereas the Black Lives Matter movement, like the civil rights movement before it, has effectively articulated the injustices that exist in the intersections of race, class, and gender, including incarceration, police brutality, poverty, unaffordable housing, income disparity, gender inequality, poor access to health care and educational outcomes. And whereas in early June, 2020, nearly 1,000 community members peacefully marched through the city of Georgetown, the town of Andrews, and Paulies Island in protest of these acts. And whereas equal justice under the law is a phrase engraved on a pediment in front of the United States Supreme Court, and Georgetown County Council believes all officials should work towards making this a reality. And whereas it is the intent of Georgetown County Council to foster meaningful relationships and establish conversations with its citizens inclusive of all races and ethnicities. And whereas the Georgetown County Council recognizes a compassionate regard for Black Lives as a vital first step, one of many, that must be taken within this organization in order to build bridges, acknowledge, and better understand cultural differences across Georgetown County. And whereas this county fully commits to promote a culture of trust among county government, county law enforcement, county advocacy, and special interest groups, and the citizens of Georgetown County, and now therefore be it resolved that the Georgetown County Council condemns any and all acts of racism and discrimination. And be it further resolved that Georgetown County Council commits itself not only to address the symbols of institutional racism, but also to proactively identify and address biases, practices, policies, and institutional barriers that perpetuate injustice and inequality in our community. And be it finally resolved that the Georgetown County Council aims to make Georgetown County an even more welcoming, inclusive, and safe community for all with equity and equal access for opportunity regardless of race or ethnicity. So shall it be proclaimed this 23rd day of June, 2020. Recommendation is to adopt this proclamation. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the adoption of proclamation 2015.
Motion by Mr. Carolina.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Charlton. Any discussion? Does he want to say something now or later?
Later.
Later, okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution 20-15 is hereby adopted. We now move to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 20-18, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Ms. Administrator, do you want to set this up for Mr. the Finance Director?
I think I'll do it.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the Finance Director can certainly add to my comments. The budget presented to you tonight is a little over $87 million. It is a no-frills budget, kind of what I promised we would do, certainly with, it certainly didn't address all the needs, all the wants of county departments. But with this budget, we did take care of our core services, even in light of COVID-19 and all the challenges that go with that. During the course of the next year, we will continue to strive and work on our budget process, but we bring you a budget that's balanced, that meets the needs, and helps us do the things that we need to do for our citizens, for our residents, for our constituencies, and everyone who's in Georgetown County. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions from council for Ms. Administrator? This is, to be commended for putting together a budget like this in these times that's balanced and keeps the county running. Recommendation is for third reading approval of ordinance number 2018. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adopt ordinance number 20-18.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Also wanted to add that the budget was done under some duress given Christians' arrival in the middle of the budgeting period. So again, goodness.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Newton and a second by Mr. Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Third reading approval of ordinance number 20-18. We next move to ordinance number 20-22, an ordinance to amend the fiscal 2019, 2020 operating budget of Georgetown County. Ms. Administrator.
Are you doing this, or? Director Finance? I'll let you address this ordinance.
Council members, we have a variety of items that need to be addressed in this amendment. $22,000 for P House landing repairs and paying for Andrews magistrate service. Appropriating funds for lottery money we received from State Library of $18,300 and appropriations for County Fire District 1 increased by 150 to provide for unanticipated costs of responding with natural disasters and health claim costs that were escalating. We also have the purchase of land from Red Mountain Timber Company, $3.7 million. We'll be using, as expected, fund balance for that, leaving estimated remaining fund balance at the end of the year of $5.5 million in that fund. Appropriations for law enforcement, $200,000 for the new S R resource officer positions funded by the state. Appropriations for funds received for Traffic Safety Division of Law Enforcement from a grant from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. We also have debt service funding increase of $337,000 to provide funding for debt service principal and interest related to the bonds that we issued this past December. We estimate to have ending fund balance in that debt service fund of about $14 million. I'll take any questions.
The P House landing, $22,000, that was due to a vehicle accident at the landing there. Did we recoup any money from insurance or we ever find out who actually had the accident there?
We are expecting insurance refund. Yeah, we've.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
That is the actual amount we received.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much. entertain a motion for ordinance number 20-22.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adopt ordinance number 20-22.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Ordinance number 20-22 is approved in third reading. Next is ordinance number 20-25, an ordinance to repeal and replace the Georgetown County solid waste user fee ordinance in its entirety. Ms. Administrator, do we have someone who can speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, good evening. There have been no changes to the text that you did review at second reading of this ordinance, but you will need to make a motion to amend to add the extra text that was brought to you at second reading. That was not technically included in that original motion at second reading, but you are familiar with this. Nothing has changed. If you have any questions, myself and Mr. Funny are here and we can try to answer those.
The change is a deletion of text regarding late fees.
It was section 8-25 and there was some text that was stricken and then some new text that replaced that. Yes, sir.
Great. Any questions from council to Mr. Bryant? In that case, recommendation for third reading approval of Georgetown, of ordinance number 20-25, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 20-25.
Motion by Mr. Moran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson, is there a motion to amend to add text?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we amend the proposed 20-25.
To delete the text within section 8-25, thank you. Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moran. Have a vote on the motion to amend, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, we move back to the original motion to approve ordinance number 20-25, all in favor? Any opposed? Ordinance number 20-25 is approved on third reading. Next, we move to ordinance number 20-26, an ordinance to earmark and set aside excess 2014 capital project proceeds. Mr. Bryant, could you set this one up for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, this ordinance will earmark and set aside the excess, the original 2014 capital project sales tax proceeds that remain, and it will also set aside and disperse some of the extra so far. There have been no changes since second reading to the ordinance. I understand there might be some discussion about it tonight, but there is nothing new to present in regard to the text that was in the ordinance from second reading to now.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council to Mr. Bryant?
I do have a few questions, Mr. Bryant. In the, we've heard of some testimony tonight regarding Andrews. When we hand, this is almost like a block grant, or when we write the town of Andrews or any municipality for that matter, a check, are there any covenants attached to it or any kind of language that would be typically specified as you, when block grants are done with the state or federal government? I mean, were we, is there a set of covenants or some sort of agreement established that are conditions of receiving the funding?
Right. So in 2014, the voters voted on what was listed as a fire and fire and police complex. That is the first million and a half. So the, you know, so obviously that money needs to be spent, you know, for that purpose. The second component of this ordinance tonight will be for a portion of the surplus proceeds that you now have above and beyond those original project amounts that you are going to give one point five extra million dollars to the town of Andrews. It is also listed in this ordinance, and you are giving it for the purpose of a Town of Andrews Police and Fire Complex. So total is three million dollars listed in the original referendum question and in this ordinance to be used for the construction of a Town of Andrews Fire and Police Complex.
And it could not be used for any other municipal purpose or function, like a municipal complex or additional offices or whatever?
The money that you are, the original one and a half that was voted upon by the voters is for town and fire, excuse me, for a police and fire complex for the town, and this money, the extra money tonight that you will, if you do approve that, will be for the same exact thing and nothing else.
For a police and fire station only?
Yes, sir.
Good. Please, that's in the record?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council for Mr. Bryant? The recommendation is for third reading adoption of ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six.
Motion by Mr. Morant, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Goggins. Any discussion? Any opposed? Ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six is approved on third reading. Next, we have, first, there are no second reading of ordinances, no reports. Read of ordinance will be by title only, and I'll read it into the record. Ordinance number twenty-two twenty-seven, ordinance number twenty-two twenty-eight, ordinance number twenty-two twenty-nine, ordinance number twenty-three, ordinance number twenty-three one, and ordinance number twenty-three two. Next, we move to reports to council. We have the approval of the annual tourism budget. Do we have someone who can speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Stevens is going to join us virtually. I think Mr. Akers is working on setting that up in the back.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you for...
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Mark Stevens, I'm the Director of Tourism Development for the Georgetown County Chamber of Commerce. Beth Stedman, our CEO, is actually in the audience there, but I'll be presenting your report. Didn't want to give you some good news, we got all of you some good news right now. And from what we've been able to determine over the last little bit and with some reports, I'm happy to tell you that May accommodation numbers look like they're going to be very good. In fact, we've had some accommodations partners tell me that they're having a record-setting May. And we use something called Air DNA, which pulls together Airbnb and Verbo, which is vacation rentals by owner information, to give us an idea of what accommodations looks like. And from that information that we've been able to gather, we're seeing that for two-nine-five-eight-five, Litchfield and Polley's Island Incorporated, that compared to May of two thousand and nineteen, so a year ago, revenue has increased in two thousand and twenty for May, and the average daily rate is up more than ten percent from this time last year. That's despite all that's happening, all that's been going on. The zip code for two-nine-five-seven-six, it's flat over last year, but will, in this day and age, will take flat at the moment. And also, two-nine-four-four-zero, I'm thinking that primarily this is going to be discussing Deborah D. Vacation Rentals, but that average rate is up thirty-three percent from two thousand and nineteen. On a call today with the South Carolina Parks Recreation and Tourism, with the State Director, Duane Parrish, and we, through all the COVID times over the last few weeks, we had twice weekly meetings with Duane and his team and all the tourism partners across the state. Those went down to once a week, and now they're every other week. But we did have a call today, and another good, another good indicator of how we're doing is that all state parks in South Carolina also have a record-breaking May. That, of course, includes Huntington Beach State Park, and from what Duane was telling us today, they're hoping, or it's looking like, June will also be a record-breaking month. So despite what we've had going on, and there are a lot of fears, of course, on what would happen with tourism, we are getting a lot of good indicators. Early on, reports were that they thought our area would do well in the sense of we would be able to engage that drive traffic from Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, in South Carolina in specific, Columbia, some of these areas that would be able to use, that would be coming, despite that our airports, the two great airports that serve us, Charleston and Myrtle Beach, despite that, of course, is down, that we're seeing, of course, a lot of people wanting to come. And so, some good news, some good news, and we're happy to report that. Of course, I'm here to talk about, to give a report for your budget. I did want to tell you some of the things that we've been doing. We have adopted a new logo for South Carolina's Hammock Coast, it's very dynamic, looks great. We have a new website for the Hammock Coast that just launched about a month ago. We announced it a couple of weeks ago, but we did a soft launch, and we're already seeing really great traffic on that. Traffic is up four point eight percent from a year ago on our new site, and you can book an accommodation right from our site, go to one of our accommodations partners. That traffic to that booking engine, the searches are up two hundred and twenty-eight percent from May two thousand and nineteen, and we have a five hundred and sixty-five percent increase in referrals and click-through to those partners that I just mentioned over this time last year. We've done some new creative, we did a photo shoot last November to get us some great creative for any print ads, any digital ads, also for the just-printed Hammock Coast Visitor's Guide. This is out, we printed fifty thousand for last year, and by the time we got this new one on the street, or ready to go, rather, you know, we were, we were holding off on sending any out because we were out, so these are on the street. I get emails from them, on people looking for them, and I can tell you, we do get a lot of people asking for that, and we do expect by this time next year, the fifty thousand we just printed of the brand-new guide with new photography, new creative, those will be gone too. And if these numbers are any indication, we may have to end up printing that even earlier because our numbers are looking really good, and we're so pleased about that. We did hold in February an annual partners meeting that we brought accommodations, restaurant, different partners together up in Merle's Inlet, brought all those people together and had a really good meeting. That's something that we, that's the second year that we've done that. In two thousand and twenty-one, this budget year, will continue to use an omnichannel approach with interactive print and out-of-home media. Some of the print will be the SCPRT Vacation Guide, the Hammock Coast Guide, AAA Magazine with print to match. By the way, if any of you are AAA members, you may have got this magazine a couple of months ago, which we, the South Carolina's Hammock Coast was featured on the cover of, this is the AAA magazine, it's called GO. This goes to every AAA member in the Carolinas, North and South Carolina. So we were lucky, got the cover of that, really pleased with that. Great five, six-page story inside about the Hammock Coast. On our budget, we did want to mention to you that, of course, like I said, we're having some really good numbers, but we're moving forward conservatively, very cautiously, rather than entering into agreements with folks, with our SEM, digital, public relations, all that, rather than entering in the usual annual contracts with these folks. We are doing this on a month-by-month basis, and we're very grateful that all of our vendors agreed to that. They understand what tourism entities, not just us, but across the country are dealing with. We're going on that on a month-to-month basis. If we have to pivot, if things start changing, we'll be able to do that. We want to make sure we let you know that. So, you know, negotiate fees with vendors, whatever we need to do. So some of the measurements for the stuff, for the things that we do, we have opt-in opportunities where people can sign up for our e-newsletters, which they get that from the Hammock Coast once a month. Of course, our Visitor Guide request, like I said, those go all over the country, all over the country, fifty thousand guides. Our SEM campaigns, we get click-through rate reports, and those, by the way, they're exceeding industry standards, we're very pleased about that. We just gave a report to the TMC board about that. Google Analytics show that our website traffic has a growth of five percent. We've had a lot of really great articles printed and posted online that we've been able to utilize. We get leads from SCPRT, from Southern Living, from Guest Quest, which is another tourism publication, we get a lot of great leads from those. And reviewing that, that I mentioned earlier, the Air DNA data, that's something new that we started about in November, December last year, where we started doing a subscription to Air DNA so we can understand our accommodations a little bit better, because you can get really great reports on hotel occupancy, but of course, as you know, hotels are not the big thing for accommodations here. That would be rental homes and condos and these sorts of things. So that information isn't as easy to come by. Air DNA gives us a lot of that information. So we're real pleased with that, we've just started a subscription with that. The state has also done the same thing that we're doing, we found out after we started, the state had also started around the same time, to get that same kind of information. So we're trying to utilize that and understand where we're going, where we've been. We're not going to have, you know, official numbers for May from the state, but we're very pleased with what we're hearing. If I can answer, or Beth can answer any questions on the budget, we'll be happy to do so. And again, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council, Mr. Stevens?
Do we have a budget figure? What is the...
Your total budget is one million eighty-eight thousand, I believe. Is that the same as last year or less?
Well, the thirty percent budget is less than last year, the thirty percent budget is four hundred thousand, so that we did that less, we, again, we're being more conservative. We, the budget was four hundred thousand, but we got more money, more money than that came in, so we were a little bit conservative on that, just to be sure. So we were putting this together during all the beginnings of COVID.
Also, to add to that, a large portion of that comes from our sixty-five percent budget that was approved by council in December, and then we also factor in grant requests to SCPRT. So the portion of the thirty percent budget that we're looking at for approval tonight is actually four hundred thousand, with the caveat that we'll make adjustments as money's come in.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council? The recommendation is for the approval of the TMC's annual tourism marketing budget. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the tourism management budget.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goggins, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The TMC budget is approved. Next, we have...
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a request for approval of commercial development site plan on the northwest corner of Highway seventeen bypass and Coral Bay Drive in Merle's Inlet. Mr. Johnson?
This is a site plan review, it's not a rezoning, this property is owned general commercial, so the uses are allowed. I don't remember bringing you such a project before, it's a little different. It's four buildings on one property, so we felt like the closest thing we could call it was a shopping center, based on our broad definition of a shopping center, and that does require Planning Commission and County Council approval. It is on one point nine six acres, which is located at a corner of Highway seventeen and Coral Drive, or Coral Bay Drive, I believe. Yeah, Coral Bay Drive and Merle's Inlet. They're asking for basically four buildings on this one point nine six acre site. Each building will be sixty-five hundred square feet for a total of twenty-six thousand square feet. I won't get maybe as quite as detailed, since this is not a rezoning, it's, again, a plan review. There is a twenty-five foot, what we call a reserve strip running along Coral Bay Drive, so the project won't have any access to Coral Bay Drive, all the access will be on Highway seventeen. I believe they actually already have a one curb cut approved from SCDOT. It'll be a mix of retail, general offices, and I think their primary ideal was particularly offices for contractors, like a plumbing office or electrician, electrical office, that type thing. We're going to monitor it very closely for parking. They did a sort of a worst-case parking plan for, if it was like a lot of retail, and they came up with seventy-one, excuse me, sixty-one spaces, and they actually have seventy-one. But regardless, we're sort of going to have it like a check, but when a tenant comes in, because we have to approve all tenants that go in there through our change of tenant process, so we'll look at the parking each time a tenant comes in there, like this is not going to accommodate a restaurant, for instance, doesn't have enough parking. So we're going to keep a close eye on that, but it works, it does meet our ordinance. I'll point out while these are four, if you're looking at it from a site, from the top-down version, it's basically four boxes, four sixty-five hundred square foot boxes on that parcel. It is in the ARV area, so it can't be just, you know, flat roof buildings, it's got to have pitched roofs on it, correct kind of siding, it can't be metal siding, that type thing, window treatments, the whole things that we require to look at in the architectural overlay. It does meet all the setbacks, it does have the ninety-foot setback on Highway seventeen. It includes a buffer, a level-three buffer on the rear, along with the rear setback, a level-three buffer. It does meet the pervious, impervious ratio of thirty to seventy that we require. We don't have a true open space requirement, and the closest we get in Georgetown County is the pervious/impervious, although that's an ordinance I hope to be bringing you soon. We do require a stubout to an adjacent commercial use. We worked really hard on the trees on this site. We've been able to, they, through a lot of work with the developer, we've identified, he identified thirty-seven trees to be saved. Staff found another seven, which he's agreed to, so for a total of forty-four trees that we worked hard to identify. Stormwater has actually already issued their conditional letter of permit for this project, so Planning Commission did hold a hearing on this and did unanimously recommend that County Council approve this by a vote of six in favor and none opposed, with the condition that, I think I've been over, that the seven additional trees identified by staff be added to his thirty-seven, and that... be added to his 37, and that they still have to, of course, get through, get the water and fire department review, water and sewer, which is standard. I said they already have stormwater, and I believe they already have SCDOT. And also, it's a given, but that all the structures have to meet the Waukesha Monet architectural requirements, and the Planning Commission is recommending, again, approval of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions for him, from council?
Boyd, a couple of things, there's a project south of there, where despite our tree ordinance and everything else, the site was just skinned.
Yeah, I'm fairly familiar with it.
And I don't recall that project coming before council for review either.
Yep. That is, the one use that we allow multiple buildings are as many warehouses or storage, and is that what's the site you're talking about, will all be storage units, actually with interior climate-controlled storage, so you go in a hallway, so the difference here is it's different uses, it's not storage, again, many storage has their provision that you can have multiple buildings.
It occupies almost the same amount of area though.
Yeah, it's, if you look at the project top-down, it does look very similar. That project, just to be frank, and I know we've all, I've talked probably very close to bringing you a tweak of the tree protection ordinance to, that project brought a lot of things to mind, because we certainly received a lot of complaints.
The other thing is that drainage, just a little north of there, drainage is pretty bad, and some properties flood through there. Is there anything afoot to improve the drainage and?
I don't know of a project, I don't know if Ray, Ray may know, but this site in particular meets the requirements, but as far as what's downstream or upstream, Ray, this is at Coral Bay, the mobile home park in the back, in Merle's Inlet, do you know anything from a drainage project?
Another right of hand, I don't.
Okay.
The pipe under that 17 in that area is way too small, restricts drainage on the west side of the highway, which backs up, again, floods properties. Another problem area, I think we will look at, particularly as development increases in that area.
Great, thank you. The Planning Commission has recommended that County Council approve of the proposed site plan. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve, the site plan is tendered by-
Motion by Mr. Goggins, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Newton, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of proposed next four phases of Georgetown County master plan, pedestrian and bike pathways. Do we have, this administrator, do we have someone who can set this up for us?
Yes, Mr. Funny, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, some time ago, County Council approved a half million dollars allocation to the CIP budget for the design and construction of pedestrian paths and bike ways, some three years ago, actually. Since that time, we have spent $138,268 for the grant match for the Windover Trace to Boyle Drive pathway that council approved. That leaves remaining of $361,732. Georgetown County, back in 2017, created a bike path master plan under the auspices of a planning department with Mr. Boyd Johnson and his staff, and helped prioritize the work and the schedule that we would consider. We have since consulted with Ms. Linda Katron, who actually been working very studiously with us in trying to improve the bike path, particularly in the Waukesha Monet area, and she helped us with some prioritization of projects that would be recommendable to council tonight. We have been working in this endeavor, and currently, we have several projects that we are underway, that have been done or currently underway. I mentioned the project Trace and Boyle Drive, but we also worked on the Walker Boulevard along Kings River Road to the Waukesha Elementary School some time ago. There was a proposed full-foot wide back lane along Pettigrew Drive during the construction of that roadway, and also recently, the MI version of that 2020, with the I-to-I Phase One was completed from the Macklin Avenue to Old Kings Highway. Those projects were recently completed, and today, we are, been working, trying to present to council tonight some options to consider for improvements. We looked at several projects, but we, tonight, are presenting the Waverly Road from Waukesha Elementary School to Highway 17. We also considering ML King from Parkersville to Waverly. Preferably, we recommend it's built on the north side of the highway. We also looked at Kings River Road from Waverly to Blue Stamm, crossing Waukesha High School. We also are recommending the conceptual study of master plan for the western portion of the county, along the Chappie and the Plantersville community. We've been working with our staff and our friends in the engineering capacity to determine what the cost would be for prepare and ready these projects for shovel-ready status, and also for being able to provide some conceptual concept for the project in the Chappie/Plantersville area. The cost for these shovel-ready projects varies from, for instance, the ML King project is $122,000, the Kings River Road project is $116,000, the Waverly Road project is $131,000, and the Plantersville/Chappie Road project is $118,000. Since we only have a remaining balance of $361,000 that's available, we, tonight, are recommending that we, that council consider the ML King project, the Kings River Road project, and the Plantersville/Chappie project. And that would, those projects, based on our estimates, is $356,000, and those numbers are below the available funds that's currently here. Based on that, we are recommending today that council approve the option number two, which is approve the three proposed phases of bike-walking pedestrian pathways and make them shovel-ready or in all conceptually planned, using guidelines, estimates totaling $356,61. In doing so, the, these work would not include any construction work. With that, I'd like to present to council for your consideration, if you have any questions at this time, I'd be glad to try to address them for you.
Questions from council for Mr. Funny?
Ray, did you mean four phases, or you said three phases?
Well, I originally mentioned that we looked at four phases, but we, because of the funding limitations, we are only recommending three phases.
And when you mentioned shovel-ready, can you clarify that? Let's talk about the acquisition of land space, and out of these three locations, again, could you go over those sites, and is the Chappie/Plantersville route included in this proposal?
Yes, sir. When I mentioned the phase, the phrase shovel-ready, I, what I meant was that we would engage the services of consultant engineering firm to help us with surveying, permitting, design, and have the project ready for an event that funding becomes available. The project in Plantersville and Chappie is 22 miles, and that project is very extensive and requires some additional study and consideration, and that project will be conceptualized, basically meaning that we will work on some phases, smaller phases, as opposed to have one phase of work.
And land acquisition is included in that?
That, well, we will be able to determine what land acquisition or easements that may be necessary. Generally speaking, in these projects, like in the past, we generally have acquired easement from the DOT or in all adjacent landowners.
Now, has there been any consideration for the southernmost part of the county, specifically the North Santee River, River Road?
Yes, sir.
We have a area that's pretty much comparable to Plantersville, we have about 12 to 14 plantation homes and properties down there, Oak-Lined Avenue, we have bike organizations that come from Charleston, and they take that route also. I mean, right turn on North River Road, down to Esteville and up South Allen Road. Is that location one for consideration in the future?
Yes, sir, it is included in the master plan, and we had to make some tough decisions to come before council tonight and make recommendations, based on the number of dollars that we have available. County Council, back in 2011, passed a resolution in designing and designating the Plantersville Road as a scenic byway, which is really a state designation, and give it some immediate ecotourism affiliation. That road, because of that designation, was given some consideration, because it has the potential of helping growing that part of the county, and providing opportunities for what we want to do in the county to preserve and share our rich history and create ecotourism base.
Okay. Well, I hope we can get into discussions and for consideration, because we have two comparable community situations in Georgetown County. The northern part of Georgetown County and the southernmost part, as for historical significance, I hope that we also, in District Three, will be considered for not only the highway designation as for historical significance, but also that we can also grow and develop that part of the county, too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a few comments as well, and a couple of questions. First of all, I'm delighted at the increased interest across the county by my colleagues in bike paths and pedestrian walkways, that was something that didn't seem to be mentioned too often when I came on council a few years ago, and I'm proud of the fact that I'm the one that asked for the $500,000, guided approved, and then also requested the master plan be approved, or be started, initiated, approved, and so on. And let me add that I would very much like to see bike paths and pedestrian walkways across this county, from beginning of Newn South, Plantersville, Chappie, Waukesha Monet, all of those places. But the thing I am a little puzzled about, I'm delighted, two of the three projects on the neck, but part of the master plan actually prioritized the elements, that identified all of the places we would put bike paths in the initial go-around, then prioritized them, and prioritized them based on a number of factors, safety, interconnectivity, expected usage, community support. And for years, there's been a lot of community support on the neck for bike paths and walkways. Neck is the most populous area of the county, and bike ways and pathways are needed, not just a luxury, but needed, and never mind increased tourism, they're needed for safety. So, anyway, these projects were listed, Chappie, Plantersville, some other, South Causeway were listed as projects, but they were not in the first tier to be approved, and I would respectfully suggest that we should follow the master plan in terms of ranking and criteria. I didn't set up the ranking and criteria, I didn't sit on the committee that arranged the routings, I commented on them, but, but anyway. And we start knocking these things down bit by bit by bit, but the goal is to have some of these projects shovel-ready by the time we can pass a penny sales tax, or maybe garner some other funding, maybe even from the school district, as well as PRT. So, with all due respect to my colleagues, I just would urge us to follow the prioritization outlined in the master plan, and not begin to deviate from it, or again, we're going to have, as we get funding, a little bit of a free-for-all, and if we do have requests for additional pathways, bike ways, that are in the master plan, we reactivate the committee that formed that, headed up Boyd Johnson, and we work to get those elements into an updated master plan. So, my comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
From looking at the master plan, I heard what my colleague had to say regarding it, but, you know, when you put a plan together, there's nothing which says that a plan cannot be changed, you know, based on the changes which occur within the county. And one of the things we look at is trying to find ways to expose the other areas of the county to some of the amenities that exist in one point. Definitely, yes, I have no objection to bike path being on the Waukesha Monet, I mean, it's a needed necessity, but I think it's a needed necessity in the Plantersville community, the Chappie community, and the other areas of the county also, along with the Santee/Charleston route with the historic sites. Bikers come down to ride through the Plantersville area at all times, and they ride through there, down the scenic byway that has been designated by the historical society there. So, with that being said, with the funds that are there, it's my understanding that the funds were placed there for the execution of bike paths throughout the community, throughout the county, I should say. So, and from my understanding, most of the funding has been spent on the Waukesha Monet already, and the only thing we're asking for is enough funding, well, at least the proposal is that some funding be designated for a conceptual plan for some other aspects of the county, so those bike routes, bike routes are bike trails, really, can be completed within other sectors of Georgetown County. I think it's a, I think the proposal being presented to us tonight is a fair proposal, it's a great proposal, I think, from what has been presented, because it designates two projects to be done within the Waukesha Monet region, and it presents one project to be accomplished within the western portion of the county as a start. And it's not to say that others will not be coming with more funding and become available, but this is all the funding we have now, and that was designated for bike path throughout Georgetown County. So, if it's designated as bike path throughout Georgetown County, it doesn't seem like all the funding is being spent throughout Georgetown County, it's being spent in one sector. So, I think this would be a good start to at least get some of the funding to be spent throughout Georgetown County. So, that's basically my comment.
All I'm suggesting is we follow the plan and the priorities set forth in the plan.
I have no objection to that, but I understand plans are there as plans, and plans are sometimes changed, depending on the conditions.
Unilaterally, sometimes. And it's not a, it's not a plan in Plantersville, it's to develop the master plan, so I think that's, I think that's fair to be putting some planning into that area of the county as well. Any other comments?
Well, I would say that, you know, from the beginning, if you, I don't know who's at the table in the planning, I've heard the name Linda Katron?
Katron.
Katron. And if you're going to look at a situation fairly, as been mentioned, you're looking at the possibility- at the possibility of bike paths throughout the county. I don't know whether or not our district was part of the consideration then also, because all things considered, we are fortunate in Georgetown County, on each ends of the county, to have communities with very heavy historical significance. I mean, we have Hop Sweet Plantation, we are signer of the Declaration of Independence, the house is right there in Santee. We have 12 to 14. I'm talking about inclusion throughout the county. And so, if a conceptional plan was developed, whenever, 2011, whether or not consideration was made for places in our district, but to be fair, let's look at how it could be spread out throughout the county and benefit all.
Well, this is just a start. Grants have to be found, and that's the next big step. So, I think this is a good start, and equitable one that addresses several parts of the county. If there are no more comments, the recommendation is for approval of the three proposed phases, or the two, two phases?
Three.
Three phases of biking and walking pathways to make them shovel-ready and conceptually planned. Entertainer motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposed next three phases of Georgetown County master plan for pedestrian pathways.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Sorry, I didn't hear the, I didn't hear the motion, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the motion.
The motion was to approve.
To approve?
Yes.
Which one, which option?
To approve the three bike paths engineered estimates, Martin Luther King, Kings River Road, Plantersville Road, Exodus Road, and Choppie Road.
A second.
Second by Mr. Marant. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the, there's approval of this plan. I understand, Mr. Carolina, you had?
Yes.
Something you wanted to say?
Yes, before we leave, I want to take this time and this moment to present to council consideration of drafting of a resolution to make Juneteenth an official holiday in the state of South Carolina. Juneteenth, which is celebrated annually on June 19th, marks the day in 1865, when the last slaves in the South who were in Texas found out they were free. In South Carolina, Juneteenth was designated a special day in 2008. The resolution made June 19th a day of reflection and commemoration of the freedom of African-Americans and their contributions to this country. We also must recognize the accomplishments African-Americans have made in South Carolina in the face of enormous adversity. Let Georgetown County Council show support of State Senator Darrell Jackson as he files legislation pushing for Juneteenth to become a state holiday next week and next year at the beginning of the new session in January. This resolution or proclamation should be sent on to our legislative delegates, Senator Saab, Senator Goldfinch, Representative Hewitt, and Representative Anderson, to present to the full state legislature in passing a bill to make June 10th, Juneteenth, that's June 19th, an official state holiday.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carolina. We'll try to craft something up by staff on that. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
The Administrator's请求.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do we get a motion?
So moved for chairman.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.